Good afternoon and half day. The Committee on General Government Operation, Appropriation and Housing is now called to order. Today is Friday, October 23rd. The time now is 3:30. Welcome to everyone connected by Zoom and those tuning in via television or the YouTube channel. Thank you for your participation, your patience and accommodating this Zoom platform while we maintain social distancing mandates. Public notices, notices for this virtual public hearings were disseminated via email to all centers and all main media broadcasting outlets. And on Friday, October, on Friday, October 16th, and then on Wednesday, October 21st. The bill we'll be discussing today is Bill Number 219-35COR, introduced by myself, co-sponsored by Speaker Tina Rose Munia Barnes and Senator William Castro, Senator Ken Regel. An act to amend, Section 7120 of Chapter 7 of Division 2, Title 17, Guam Code Annotated, to amend, Section 8502, Article 5, Chapter 8 of Title 12, Guam Code Annotated, and to amend, Section 5008.2 of Part A, Article 1, Chapter 5 of Title 5, Guam Code Annotated, relative to strengthening the purchase or lease back of renewable energy purchases of service for the Department of Education, Guam Academy Charter Schools, Guam Community College, and the University of Guam. The rules of this hearing is the Zoom meeting is hosted by my staff and will mute all Zoom participants until called upon by myself. Members of the committee and/or noncommittee members wishing to speak may indicate their desire to meet through the in-app chat feature. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by me before speaking and begin by stating their name for record, keeping persons when called to speak. Please ensure that you are unmuted. Committee members will be allowed to pose a question to an individual testifying. Questions and testimonies shall be confined to Bill 219-35. Personal inference as to the character or the motive of any senator or any individual testifying is not permitted. Any violation of this general rule of conduct will result in their removal from the public hearing by my host. Please ensure that your video remains on throughout the hearing. Participants must be visible at all times and not engage in other activities during the hearing. If you need to take a drink and you want to eat a snack while you're at it, feel free. I have no problem down. Failure to maintain visibility may cause your move from the meeting livestream. I'd like to acknowledge the presence of my colleague, Lieutenant Secretary, Senator Amanda Shelton. And I will provide an opening on Bill 219. I would like to also recognize everyone that's present. Let me see if I can just make sure I get the names correct. Okay, we got John Benaventi from GPA, GWA, the whole group there. That's what John represents. And we got Mr. Lynn Scott from Green Energy. We got Jeffrey Vokola from Magnesian Renewable. And we got Fred Reckley, who's the PUC, but also, gosh, what are the positions Fred you hold other than PUC?
Also private counsel, but I'm here as a law judge.
Yes. All right, thank you, sir. I'm just gonna read my introduction of the bill and then we'll ask each one of you folks that are here to testify. And then I know that Senator Shelton, I may ask you a few questions if it need be, all right? Bill 219-35 was introduced to open the doors to procuring solar energy for our education institution in DOE, charter schools, GCC, and UOG. I'd like to also recognize Senator William Castro, join us, one of my co-sponsors.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. With over $12 million being spent on energy annually, we are confident that this bill assists these institutions in saving these funds for much-needed expenses such as equipment, teaching materials, and capital improvements. These savings may also be leveraged as a source of payment for the institution to utilize any financing mechanisms such as bonds or other federal loan programs for facility maintenance or construction of service. Bill 219 took the original PPA law and amended it to open the doors to provide the option of a sale/leaseback while allowing the individual institutions to procure on their behalf. With additional safeguards, we hope that the community will support this measure as its goal is to save funding, apply those savings to other much-needed areas of education. We conducted a roundtable meeting on this matter months ago, and today we want to get the remaining comments and recommendations from our community. I look forward to hearing the testimonies today and hope we'll be able to make this a rally as we move forward in going green in our government and on our island. Ted Zeus Massey. I'd like to also recognize Carlos Camacho has joined us today. And I will begin for testimonies. We'll begin with John, and then we go to Lynn Scott, and then Jeffrey, and then Fred, and then Carlos, and then we'll open it for my colleagues to ask any questions. All right, John, so why don't you go ahead and we'll let you begin. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Senator Shelton, half a day. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on Bill 219-35. GPA does not support this bill. This legislation and similar ones were pending or passed by this body are not supported by complete data required for proper economic and technical feasibility analysis. These data must be vetted by technical experts and responsible institutions such as the CCU, PUC, and other stakeholders. GPA supports the intent of Bill 219, which is to find lower-cost energy solutions for Guam DOE and other educational institutions. I request the legislature pass further actions on this legislation to allow the utility to prepare its recommendations to the CCU, PUC, and the legislature on a responsible viable energy path for educational institutions. If passed in its current form, Bill 219 will ultimately result in higher costs and substantial risk for the participating educational institutions and/or GPA ratepayers. The legislature passed Bill 80-35 Public Law 35-46 mandating renewable portfolio standards of 50% by 2035 and 100% by 2045. GPA is currently on track to achieve 25% by 2023. We are updating the integrated resource plan to achieve at minimum the 2035 50% target by 2030. The COVID-19 pandemic has delayed our completion of the IRP, but anticipate it will be finalized by June 2021. The IRP will consider different models including utility scale, rooftop, community solar, and solar farming, to name a few. The plan will also address infrastructure upgrades necessary to integrate all the renewable models in a reliable and sustainable manner. I estimate the financial impact of Bill 219 to be potentially over $7 million per year anomaly, over $140 million on a 20-year contract, and $280 million over 40-year contract. The burden will be borne by the GPA ratepayers who are not net-mirroring customers. This, in my opinion, will result in increased rate impacts of approximately, for approximately 50,000 unfortunate non-net-mirroring ratepayers. One could say that electric ratepayers will be paying a tax which should be paid by the entire community and not just GPA ratepayers. GPA powered up before the PUC to face out net-mirroring credits from full retail to GPA's avoided costs. The PUC has noted it would address the issue once NEM nominal capacity reaches 26,000 kilowatt. Currently, it is at about 24,600 kilowatt from about 2,200 customers. The proposed additional total NEM capacity for educational institutions will more than double the current 24,600 kilowatt NEM capacity. Bill 219 is mandating, Bill 219 is mandating NEM for institutions which set their rates for the contract term and therefore interferes with the PUC authority as a utility rate-setting body, and in my opinion interferes with government Guam bond covenants. Additionally, Bill 219 creates an unfunded mandate by directing a specific group of ratepayers utilize the system grid at no cost at a full retail credit with an impact as noted above. I offer the following comments regarding key language or provisions of Bill 219. A 40-year term is not advisable. Significant technology improvements typically occur over a 20-year period. Locking into fixed technology buys the institution and limits future opportunities. Additionally, even with a low 1% escalator of the contract rate, the contracted energy cost to the institution will double in 40 years. NEM is a distribution system model having energy generated at another location for certain schools is a wheeling through the transmission system model. Wheeling brings technical issues and will be a unfair practice for ratepayers because it allows someone to utilize the infrastructure for their sole benefit. GPA system analysis is performed by professional engineers and assisted by consultants as necessary. GPA has over 10 registered professional engineers who regularly address current system reliability and its future state with renewables. Independent consultants are not under contract with GPA. With GPA cannot offer realistic viable solutions that address these complex system issues. Unlike GPA engineers and his professional consultants, independent consultants lack familiarity and accountability for the system. I ask that you allow GPA and our professional team to determine what is needed for the system we are accountable for and not mandate studies as noted. Energy storage systems such as batteries are required for all future solar PV production tied into the grid, including utility scale and customer scale renewables. Solar PV produces intermittent energy. The system can no longer absorb this intermittent uncontrolled energy. Additionally, the duck curve, and I quote that, which occurs during the day must be limited to avoid system interruptions. This would be the only way for GPA to achieve the renewable portfolio standards. I have attached testimony provided earlier this year in Bill 196-35, which was similar to Bill 219-35. In it, I laid out recommendations to achieve a lower cost and sustainable energy future for Guam DOE, which could also be applied to other institutions. Read my former testimony into the record today, but provide it as part of Bill 219's record. Also attached are two recent articles which describe the experiences of other committees as they attempt to achieve their 100% renewable energy goal. GPA is cautious to avoid the costly lessons learned by others while we expediently work towards a reliable, resilient renewable energy future for the benefit of all ratepayers. Thank you for the opportunity to testify on Bill 219-35. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'll be ready to answer questions when you're going on.
All right, just stand by, John, and as we finish all the testimony, then I'll open it to my colleagues. And I'd like to also recognize Senator Reese, welcome back from our earlier hearings that we've done. Thank you. Lynn Scott, if you're ready, sir, you can go ahead and speak. And for everyone, for my colleagues, I do, I did receive, I just received the testimony of Mr. John Benaventi and other attachments, and that will be provided to you, all right? Lynn, if you can, Mrs. Scott, you can go ahead and unmute. And I also recognize Senator Taylor Tidaway. He to unmute there, Lynn.
All right. Thank you, Chairman, and other colleagues and members of the industry. Being able to speak on this bill again. I spoke at the roundtable and just like John Benaventi, I would like to recommend that the legislature put a hold on this for some of the reasons that he brought up, but also for some other reasons different than his. Mostly because of the size that is being allowed and the length of contract. In here, there is no mention of energy conservation at all. And as all of you know, that that has been our primary focus over the last 10 years, in energy conservation before solar production. Also now know that we have some of the largest and best batteries there are that last for now 20 years and are warranted for 15 years. So with that being said, energy conservation is a key. And so if I remember, and John Benaventi didn't bring this up, it was just two years ago that GPA paid for a study that showed for $12 million that the GOE schools could save 30% of their power bill for just $12 million. Okay, that's 30% right off the top. And in this bill, it discusses allowing them to build solar production up to 80% of their consumption. Well, already we've oversized it, and now we want to talk about oversizing for the next 25 to 40 years. Why would we do that when technology and air conditioning and lighting and other things would make it even more oversized and continue to cost the taxpayer even more and more? I would ask that you look at the engineering studies that were paid for by GPA already and rethink this strategy. By downsizing and taking advantage of the energy conservation items that are available at significant lower cost to the taxpayer and to the government of Guam, you could sit down and save 80% with significant lower costs, okay? In addition to that, especially during this time of COVID, we can put a lot more local workers to work in industries that can be provided right here on Guam. So again, my recommendation is please rethink this before you take this to the voting floor and look at what we can do right here locally before we put this out to the big contractors globally, okay? Lighting, air conditioning, I can provide examples of projects we've done where we achieved 90% saving of which lighting and air conditioning were able to save buildings, large commercial buildings, 90% of their energy consumption long before we played in the solar market. Now, I do believe in the intent of providing the remaining energy savings with solar and battery storage, and that's why we also do those products as well. So thank you for allowing me to testify, but please slow down and relook at the numbers from an energy conservation standpoint before power production. Thank you again, and I sit ready to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Scott. Jeffrey Vokola, I know we got John Fernandez coming on board and he has a quick meeting. So Jeff, if you don't, if you could, please allow John Fernandez, because he has to take off to a meeting and he has testimony, and then you would follow, all right, Jeff?
Yes, sir.
John, are you ready? John Fernandez.
Yes. I'm sorry about that. Just kind of transitioning from a workshop I'm chairing on the one hand to another meeting on the internet access for our students. And I just want, but I did want to come here. I just submit written testimony, and hopefully I can just answer any quick questions if there are any. But basically, of the testimony I submitted, hopefully you have it and can just read it, you know, basically as in general support of Bill 219-35. Basically, the main points of my testimony are, I understand that the bill expands the number of institutions who are authorized to seek the use of renewable energy by including Guam Academy Charter Schools, GCC, and UOG in addition to GDOE. The bill also adds the option for us, for the entities to enter into a sale/leaseback agreement in addition to a power purchase agreement. Further, the bill extends the potential term of agreement to 40 years, which expands opportunities for financing solutions. So we don't necessarily take any, express any opinion on whether to extend the authority to access renewable energy to other entities. I believe that you can be well discussed within this committee, but we do support the flexibility added by providing a sale/leaseback option as well as expanding the timeframe for an agreement to 40 years. And the reason I say that is, you know, in the course of discussions over renewable energy over the past, you know, several years, one of the options that's been raised is the possibility of simply, you know, using the sale/leaseback mechanism to purchase the equipment for the schools and, you know, not have to necessarily go down the power purchase agreement if it didn't make sense. And again, by adding that language, it would allow us to go, you know, in two different, you know, with two different possibilities, either a PPA or a sale/leaseback option depending on what, you know, would benefit the agency the most. The sale/leaseback, I mean, the extension of the term to 40 years, we would support. I think the reason why we would support this is because we've been in active conversation with the US Department of Agriculture on the potential use of USDA funding to be able to support, you know, this type of arrangement for solar energy. And if we were able to take advantage of USDA financing, the term, the terms that they provide are up to 40 years. And if that's the case, we'd like to have that at least available as an option, you know, when it comes to looking at a solution for the schools. The other, the bill goes on to reserve 100% of the energy savings to be able to be used for maintenance or for capital improvement projects. And the language authorizes that these savings can be leveraged to finance facility improvements that we know are greatly needed throughout our school district. So, you know, I fully support this provision as a way to secure a dedicated funding stream for major facilities improvement. I would definitely want to make sure that in the bill or any, you know, related bill, including the Appropriations Acts, for instance, that there be some clarity as to how the savings are calculated. So for instance, you know, looking at our past bills, our past billing, we can definitely estimate what it's cost us, you know, in past years to purchase power. And certainly going forward, we could, you know, we could definitely identify the savings based on our past billings. But I guess the bill doesn't really, you know, talk about the mechanism. I would want just to make sure that there's some clarity as to how that savings would be calculated, because if we are going to leverage that potentially for, to finance capital improvements, there's going to need to be some clarity and a pledge, you know, of a certain level of resources that we want to make sure is not, you know, is unambiguous when it comes down to leveraging those funds. And then finally, with regard to the procurement process, you know, I'm, I think I will leave that to the legislature. I'm supportive of any action or effort to make the procurement process more efficient. I know that for us, it impacts our projects in a couple of ways. For DOE, in terms of our procurement, we just want to make sure that there's clarity in terms of how we move forward to, you know, to procure the services that we need for our schools. But my understanding is that when it's come to, when it can't, when it has come to the landlords procuring, well, the landlords of our leased schools being able to take advantage of the solar energy agreements, that there has been some confusion with regard to exactly how exempt they, you know, the landlords are from the government procurement office. What I mean by that is that in the original legislation, it looked like for the landlords of the leased schools, they were able to, authorized to go out and enter into a power purchase agreement without having to conform to Guan procurement rules or regulations. But upon further review and discussion with the AG, they weren't in agreement that that exemption was very clear and straightforward. And so there has been some back and forth in terms of that discussion as to whether the exemption was understood and able to be applied. So again, you know, as long as, you know, we can address the issues to allow us to move forward efficiently, I'm open to whatever language you would propose around procurement. So with that, Senator, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. John, do you need to run away real quick? Could I rather try to get everybody's testimony so that you could hear it also? Would you be able to hang around for a while?
I can, I can, I can hang on as long as I can. Oh, yeah, I'll be trying my best, and I'll let you know if I have to drop off. And I'll tell my team to try to run the meeting without me.
All right, thank you. I appreciate that. And as Jeff, if you can go ahead, Jeffrey Vokola, please, if you can start your testimony.
Thank you, Senator. My name is Jeffrey Vokola, Chief Operations Officer for Magnesian Renewable Energy, a locally owned and chartered small business on Guam. I'm a resident for more than a decade and an advocate for renewable and solar technology. I applaud the chairman for scheduling this public hearing on Bill Number 219-35 and appear before this committee to offer my support for its passage and to suggest modest modifications to improve the legislation. The suggestions are, one, in various sections of this bill, it mentions as-finance options, power purchase agreements or sale/leaseback agreements. I believe this is meant to distinguish between agreements that sell energy generated by PV system, PPA, and the other which contemplates leasing of PV equipment. The National Renewable Energy Laboratory, or NREL, which is our nation's lab responsible for researching and developing, testing, and deploying renewable technologies for the country, acknowledges both PPA and non-PPA financial structures utilized by the solar energy industry. I believe that the legislation should be amended to allow for financing options that offer the greatest amount of flexibility to Guam DOE, GCC, and UOG and other facilities in order to deploy solar on their facilities, allow them for the best financial structure, add in the most value back to the school boards and the community. Number two, in Section 2, Paragraph A, Line Item 5, 6, and 7, it states the financial structure should be based on 80% offset of the last 12-month period immediately preceding the execution of the lease of the PPA. I believe this should be changed to the average of the last three years of the facility's energy consumption. This would be a more accurate data point to determine the average energy consumption for a particular facility. This is also stated in Section 2, Paragraph E, Line Item Number 5. The reason why I support this bill is simple, it's good for Guam. The intent to provide an opportunity cost from 2013, when the underlying law was passed by this body, has not yet come to fruition and thus has not resulted in any savings to the Guam Department of Education. But there remains hope that the well-intentioned law can be fixed with the passage and enactment of Bill 219-35 to finally allow GDOA and other Guam educational facilities to build the ability to access PV technology. Now more than ever because government is predicting tighter budget constraints due to the effects of the COVID-19 pandemic, the time to act is now. If we do not act on this now, our educational facilities will continue to unnecessarily spend millions of dollars in utility bills when in reality the smart deployment of PV technology could save millions of dollars that could be better invested in repairing aged schools and providing students and teachers with more resources. This pandemic will end, and when it does, money will be needed to add to the operation costs of the Guam Department of Education. The opportunity cost is adding to a great loss to GDOA. Interest rates are very attractive for investment now and in a short-term and foreseeable future. To developers, this translates into better term rates for this type of investments, which also translates into an attractive rate proposal for the DOA. That being said, we are and have been working against time for the sunsetting of tax benefits. The GDOA being a nonprofit entity and not being able to capitalize on tax benefits enables the developer to utilize these benefits, helping to lower the rate structure for DDOA and the proposed term structure. This year, which again will be missed, it stays down from the 30% tax benefit to a 26% tax benefit. Next year, this will be reduced down to 22%. Every year misses an opportunity missed for a better rate for GDOA. I also just wanted to take a few minutes of your time and address some concerns that were addressed at the last roundtable on this bill on February 6, 2020. Intermittencies from solar energy systems. The intermittencies, NEM customers are dispersed throughout the island. The proposed bill allowing schools to place solar energy on various schools and supporting facilities throughout the island would be the same scenario. The new power plant being built was promoted in numerous public hearings and on a GPC or GPA website that this new power plant would eliminate intermittencies and eliminate blackouts or issues with frequency control related to solar energy, which would enable the ability for greater penetration of renewable energy on Guam. The other project being procured by GPA is a 40-megawatt battery storage project for $43 million that also was promoted to eliminate these intermittencies. NEM customers are not responsible for these blackouts or grid fluctuation on the GPA grid. Solar energy penetration is too low at this point. I have discussed penetration ratios of solar energy projects in Guam with some of the I have discussed penetration ratios of solar energy projects in Guam with some of the best solar energy and conventional and grid. Generation engineers that I know personally throughout the world. And it's had no uh, negative feedback on a distributed generation or grid penetration of solar energy at these low levels. A point that I made at the last round table was our solar energy inverters and now coupled with battery storage. Uh, our systems that we are now install, starting have frequency control. And ride through settings on these inverters. That are set on the high and low settings of the GPA grid to help the utility manage their grid. This was not a utility initiative, this was a industry initiative. That was done over the last few years to work with the utility to eliminate these type of issues related to grid management. I agree that GDOA and other institutions seeking monies. Are seeking to add monies back to their budget due to this pandemic. And the world's instability on oil. Pricing by seeking energy alternatives such as solar energy on their facilities. Should be able to complete this procurement process within their institution. GDOA has successfully completed a ninety million dollar procurement on Simon Sanchez School within their own procurement department. GDOA, if needed, can seek the advice of and from any procurement. Industry experts, public or private, such as NREL, the Department of Energy and the Solar Energy Industry Association. To complete this procurement. The CNMI Public School System just completed a procurement process for their school system. This was a great success for their school system. Enabling them to secure a contract close to their FAC cost, which is the fuel adjustment clause. Close to that, which is also similar to our LEAC or fuel avoidance cost. This procurement process was completed in-house by their PSS procurement department. At the last public hearing, the CCU and GPA discussed being experts in power purchase agreement and listed clauses in a PPA. That they look. That they look for. Uh, such as the developer being bound legally by production clauses and penalties being proposed. If production measures are not met. These are typical parameters in a power purchase agreement that an industry expert can review. GDOA may also at their discretion seek advice from GPA. If it, which is in the bill in section two, paragraph D, line item eighteen and nineteen and twenty. So GPA at the discretion of GDOA can be involved in this procurement process. There were also discussions on cost shifting, which would force non-solar ratepayers to pick up the burden. A place in solar energy on GDOA schools. This has always been a clever debate by the utility without merit. We have produced on numerous occasions the Berkeley Laboratories Report on Cost Shifting. Which eliminates this argument. Berkeley Laboratories is a very prestigious neutral third-party think tank that completed this report over three years ago. In the bill in section two, paragraph A, page three, line item five. The offset should be no more than eighty percent of the school's annual power needs. The twenty percent is going back to the Guam Power Authority. So if cost shifting were to exist, this would enable GPA the monies to manage this scenario and manage their grid. The GPA has stated on numerous occasions that cost shifting with them customers. Today costs them in excess of three million dollars a year. But on July thirtieth of this year, the CCU and GPA had no issue with not raising the rate. For energy enabling the utility to absorb the seventeen million dollar loss. For under recovery of fuel up to January two thousand and twenty-one. It is hard for me to understand how a very profitable utility can absorb this, this loss, yet raise concerns about cost shifting. Measures that do not exist. In the last round table, there were concerns on the length of a twenty-year contract. My experience with public projects. That do not have an insurance and a strict maintenance component to them lead to no value long-term to the public entity. Too many times traveling to Alquam and the outer islands, I've come across projects that the community are burden with. That know, that are no longer in operation and are wasting away. With a long-term contract, the end users guarantee a system that is, that is left in optimal working condition. The burden is on the developer to make sure these systems are producing energy, enabling the repayment for these finance structures. I also heard that solar energy modules and systems are useless after twenty years. This is far from the case. Solar energy modules and inverters are warranted for the life of the contract. After twenty years, solar energy modules must produce at least eighty-six percent. Of the energy that they were listed to produce at the day of installation. After the expiration of the twenty-year contract, DOJ, GDOA will be handed a system. That should last at least another twenty to thirty years with a proper maintenance program. Enabling the school system to place all these saved monies on energy toward their operating budget. Towards their operating budget. This is a long-term plan to enable GDOA and other institutions to save money on energy costs. My last response to this last round table. Um, in February is in regard to local preference. I do not understand why, as an island community, we are so fast to hire off-island developers. To hire off-island developers when we have the island experts and capabilities performing this and other contracts within our own community. I heard that the debate that we would be limiting ourselves to higher rates and more expensive contracts. I believe as an island community, we should always give preference to local contractors and developers. During this military buildup, the federal government was encouraged by the government of Guam to utilize local contractors. And our leaders have rightfully advocated for set aside for local businesses to gain from the billions of dollars. Being invested by the federal government into Guam. Now during a government of Guam project. Why would we not offer the same courtesy to our own businesses who pay local taxes, employ local residents. And keep earned revenue circulating in our island's economy. The CNMI Public School System awarded a contract for their schools for solar energy. And the contractual price was close to LEAC or their fuel avoidance cost rate with a local developer. If whenever possible, local preference should apply, and especially on this project. This one able be to do business-to-business commerce, taxes paid, health and welfare for the employees. Apprenticeship programs being utilized and initiated. Building not just solar energy systems, but an industry for the betterment of people, families and this community. I applaud this legislature and its senators who have developed and supported this bill. I believe this bill is good now and for the long-term betterment, betterment for this community and of course this world. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Um, Mr. Frederick, um, Horeki, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman San Augustin, members of the committee. I'm Fred Horeki. I'm the Chief Administrative Law Judge at the Guam Public Utilities Commission. And I'm presenting this testimony today on behalf of the PUC Chairman, Dr. Jeffrey Johnson. For the reasons that I will state and were stated in the testimony of Dr. Johnson. The PUC opposes the enactment of Bill two nineteen thirty-five. The PUC does support the intent of the bill, which is to promote solar energy on Guam. And to aid in attaining a lower cost for cleaner electricity production and usage. The problem is, this bill is not going to achieve that at all. In fact. Uh, Dr. Johnson's testimony submits that this bill will increase the costs. Of providing solar energy. It is not an efficient way to do it and it will increase rates. And the need for ratepayers to pay for these systems. I would note that since two thousand and eight, the PUC has been responsible for implementing the net metering program. Uh, and for assuring that it is properly established. It has supported the program and set it up in a reasonable, responsible manner. But the problem with this legislation to begin with is as both Mr. Scott and GM Benevente stated. There has been no study whatsoever to determine how much solar energy. Will this net metering proposed in this bill inject into the GPA system? Now, the bill extends up to eighty percent of the power needs for GDOA, UOG, GCC. And the question is, what kind of impact is that going to have? Upon the GPA transmission and distribution systems? And the answer is, the legislature does not know, we do not know, because no one has done a study. To really evaluate whether there will be an impact. Now, it is the case that solar energy clearly can cause under frequency power outages. And has done so in the GPA system. The twenty-five megawatt plant in Danden did uh, cause a number of outages. And the addition of large amounts of net metering energy could well affect the ability of the system to handle it. Mr. Benevente earlier told you that this bill will basically double. The amount of net metering energy currently produced by the system. So at present, twenty-four point six megawatts. You can double that and obtain almost fifty megawatts of net metering energy. That would be injected into the GPA system. And the question is, is that going to have a negative impact? And it could definitely. Integration studies of GPA has suggested. That if you put too much solar energy into the system, that it will cause outages. And particularly as of here, uh, it seems likely that these institutional systems. For all the schools won't have battery storage. I know Mr. Bacolo spoke quite a bit about. How the industry is moving towards that, but there's no indication that any of these. Projects for the schools would contain battery storage, which also means that the power that they generate. Is going to be useless for the nighttime peak load of GPA. So in my mind, without a study, there's a great likelihood that Guam law will be violated. Twelve GCA section eight five oh two C two C. Provides that the Guam Department of Education may only exceed present net metering capacity limitations. Quote, as long as there is a demonstrated. If no demonstrated adverse impact on Guam Power Authority's transmission and distribution systems. So here with the schools being able to uh. Uh, satisfy eighty percent of their power needs through net metering. I think there, there is a, a great possibility that there could be an adverse impact. But certainly the legislature should not even consider such a bill without knowing exactly. How is the power system going to be affected here? So we suggest you should not even uh, address this legislation until we have the required study. Now, secondly, uh, this bill will result in an increase in residential power rates. It's not going to save the ratepayers of Guam. Uh, that, that's a fiction. Um, that is the stated purpose. But the actual result is going to be how higher power rates. What this bill does, it, it looks at one side of the equation. It says, oh, this is great for the schools. And I understand the schools want to reduce their power rates. Everybody does. But the problem is, if you implement this for the schools, who's going to pay for it? Rates are what's called a zero-sum game. If you reduce the rates for one entity. Somebody else is going to have to come in and fill those rights back up, fill the rates up. So although you could reduce DOE rates. Those rates are going to be borne by GPA and the customers. And look at the impact here. Right now, uh, GDOA is one of the largest customers of GPA. It pays or was paying before the pandemic. I think a million dollars a month, over twelve million dollars a year. When you add in the other schools, UOG, uh, GCC, the figures I looked at estimated that. Could be two million dollars in revenues. GPA is going to lose a lot of that because GPA will be required to provide credits. To the net metering customers at retail rate, which means they will not be obtaining the same level of revenues. They are at the present time. And when that's the case, then somebody else, the non-net metering customers are going to have to step in and bear the cost. So I think uh, definitely that, that's a concern that again needs to be studied through a study. Uh, before this kind of, of. Program is implemented. Ninety-six percent of ratepayers on Guam are non-net metering customers. And if you deprive GPA of revenues, then the rates will have to be increased. To reflect the true revenues of GPA and their need for rates. I would also point out another problem. Right now, the um, rates for the government entities subsidize residential ratepayers. Now, under this bill, I don't know exactly why education is, is somehow. Decided to be separate from everybody else, but the same theory. If you say that rates for GDOA should be under net metering. Why not do the same thing for the whole government? What's different about education than DOE? Uh, uh, DPW, GITA, everything else. If you take this principle to, to its extent, you will be reducing the revenues of GPA. By making this kind of program applicable to government entities. And what are you going to do about the rate subsidies that the governmental entities pay? You subsidize the education entities. Then that's less subsidy that's going to go to the residential ratepayers. And the PUC will have to come in, review that and possibly adjust the, the rates for, for the residential ratepayers. We think also in other ways, this bill is going to increase the costs that ratepayers pay. When you get right, right down to it, net metering honestly is not the most cost-effective form of renewable energy. A far more effective form is utility scale. Which GPA has been engaging in in the last couple of years. Right now, GPA has over two hundred megawatts of utility scale energy of on, on project. Uh, some of it, a hundred and sixty megawatts is already, I'm sorry, a hundred twenty is already contracted. And those projects which don't have battery storage are going to provide energy to ratepayers. At a price between six and eight and a half cents per kilowatt hour. That's probably uh, three times less than that would be provided by the, the solar providers under net metering. And even if you take into account savings for fuel oil, still, the net metering program probably charges. Double the amount of the utility scale. And the final GPA project is a forty-five megawatt project that'll have uh. Solar energy provided on two naval station site, uh, sites or two Navy sites. Uh, the cost there, even with battery storage, will be eleven cents per kilowatt hour. Again, these are all far less than the cost of net metering. So really. Senators, if you're concerned about rates and the cost of renewable energy. You ought to look at the utility scale option more, but be very concerned. That what you do in this bill might well increase the rates of the residential ratepayers. There's just one final point that I want to address, which I, I have presented in uh. Legislation hearings before. And that's the fact that this bill does interfere with the powers of the Public Utilities Commission. The legislature put the PUC in charge of issues about what the penetration level should be for net metering. It put the PUC in charge of the net metering program. Yet what this bill does is actually completely disregard the cap that the PUC already set. In docket nineteen zero four, the PUC set a cap of ten percent, meaning that ten percent. Of the uh. Solar energy production could be, or, or the energy production could be through net metering. And that would have been twenty-six megawatts. But as Mr. Benevente indicated earlier, this bill will itself double. The amount of the penetration level. So essentially by allowing this amount of net metering energy. The legislature would be disregarding the penetration level that the PUC said. The PUC said, once that level is met of ten percent. We're going to again have to look at the entire net metering program to look at all the rates. To see if the rates are properly compensating. to see if the rates are properly compensating GPA, or whether there are any adjustments that need to be made. So this bill would essentially disregard the penetration level that the PUC set. Now finally, in that regard, is the issue about the bond covenants. You know, they're very broad. They prevent the government of Guam and the legislature from interfering with the PUC's duties. And I'm going to quote the Bond Council from a recent hearing and testimony on Bill three fifteen. The Bond Council stated, quote, "Any transaction that would involve net metering arrangements with GPA, the use of GPA's transmission system, the use of GPA's distribution system, must be subject to the approval of the PUC after consideration of appropriate rate-making policies, including the appropriate allocation of costs or various ratepayer classes." So these are exactly the kinds of issues that should be addressed and are required under the bond covenants, which, by the way, the legislature agreed to, and even established statutory authority to require the bond covenants, which prevent any interference with the rights, duties, or obligations of the PUC. So we believe this could well result in a violation of the bond covenants if this legislation is passed. In conclusion, I'd like to say on behalf of Dr. Johnson, that this bill should not be enacted as there's been no study concerning its impact upon the GPA distribution and transmission systems. The bill would result in higher power rates for the residential ratepayers of Guam. Finally, it would interfere with the PUC's independence. The PUC is created by the Organic Act of Guam as an independent rate-setting body. And it would violate the bond covenants by creating net metering relationships involving the use of the power system and would negatively impact rate policies. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. Mr. Carlos Camacho, do you have anything to testify on, please, sir?
Yes, I do. Wow, a bunch of power hitters. Well, half a day, senators. John, Fred Horeki, the other John with a J O N. My name is Carlos Camacho. I'm here on behalf of GEEF, Guam Education Finance Foundation. These are the guys that manage and represent the Lee schools. Very similar to John F. Kennedy, very similar to the Tejon High School. And originally, when this bill was done many, many years ago, there was provisions that GEEF had followed, and followed to the T of the law, to get support from GPA, to get support through the Attorney General's Office, and all through the whole exercise, not bypassing any, any other government entities that will review the, at that time, part purchase agreement. So the GEEF folks did all that. We went through GPA, just to let Mr. Horeki know, we went to GPA. We met with the CCU. We provided them whatever technical requirement based on that law. And I don't know if you guys can see this, and I provided as a testimony. We received resolution two thousand sixteen dash nineteen right here from the CCU. So nobody was left in the dark. Everybody was fully informed. And yes, yes, there is, let me just shut this off, I'm sorry. GPA did put their, where asked conditions, and one of those conditions are the mitigation factors we need, the GEEF schools had to do in order to transport those solar energy back into the gridlines. So all those, all those things was discussed five, six years ago. And all those things, we've worked with engineering with GPA, and this is the reason we received the resolution from GPA. What held us back in the five or six years, and we took five to six years of back and forth from both government and the Attorney General's Office, even though the schools were third-party owned. And even though the procurement was removed because it's third-party owned, there is still the other part of the procurement arm, section five oh four, five oh five, and five oh six, that held back the agreements of moving forward of the PPA. So six years later, six years later today, or since February, we're coming in trying to fix these technical conditions that was brought up. And Mr. Horeki, I apologize, I did not know that this is a bond violation, because if that was the case, we should have been red flagged at that point. We should have been red flagged at that point. And if that was the case, just recently, almost two weeks, three weeks, a month ago, one of the Lee schools just procured through the bond, through, through GITA, who went through Bond Advisory Council. That was never, the flag was never raised as you just described, and they floated a nine million dollar solar bond through the same process. So I know you said earlier, you think it may be a bond violation, but the great news is that that already went through that exercise. And at least the standards and everybody involved that floated that bond, I guess, didn't see that red flag either. So that's why JFK floated a nine million dollar solar project. Now, that did not go through a PPA, and that did not do all that stuff. That was defined as a leaseback provision. That's the reason this bill has a leaseback, so we can make sure that, that we don't meet the PPA agreement. Where another concern that was brought up in February is to call the escalation factor. Every year, there's that escalation factor, right? And you don't know when that, that would just keep going up every year for the twenty years. Well, under leaseback provision, there's no escalation factor or non-PPA purchase agreement. There's no escalation factor. So at least you know your fixed costs, and you can combine that with grants and loans and a fixed cost with no escalation. So that's all, we only, the GEEF guys only play a part of this role in two one nine, because this two one nine is part of original bill thirty-two something, I forget, thirty-two ninety-five, I think. But we were just here to fix the technicality of, of us following the law. And as you can tell, we waited six years, and it's two six years. And today, we're hearing all the impacts and potentially bond, the bond covenant violation or the PUC violation, but I'm just dumbfounded if that was the case. The same body just gave a nine million dollar solar project for a Lee school. And you, Mr. Horeki, I'm not sure if you know about that, that just closed, and they just are ready to go in that, but that's not a PPA. They're building nine million dollar worth of solar panels in their schools. And maybe Mr. John Fernandez can talk about that, but I don't know the details other than what I'm hearing through media and what I heard through press releases that they've done it. So all we're doing is, we just, we went through the exercise again to reiterate. We did not bypass GPA. We went to the CCU for courtesy and respect, as per what the law said. And CCU did come back, Mr. Benevente came back and goes, okay, one of your things is, it's called right here, a systems impact study, exactly what you said. Can you do a system impact study for the areas where you're impacting the grid line? That was six years ago, and we've been working with engineering of GP and that, and this is why we got the resolution, at least for those schools. Now, for the rest, I don't know. Maybe that safeguard is to be there, because maybe, maybe when the rest of the other assets will try to get in, and that the grid line is not able to absorb those type of backflow energy in, maybe that's where it doesn't meet the condition. But at least in this case, we followed every rule of engagement, just for the record. We follow every rule of engagement. And our problem for six years was the technical part of, because the word was PPA, part purchase agreement. It conflicted with one part of the procurement side of the law, sections five oh four, five oh five, and five oh six, which is why that one is being further amended in this law, proposed law. But other than that, there is a safeguard. We follow the rules. GPA did say you must provide a system impact study. And in the last six years, that's what we've been doing, and if that, if that impact was negatively diverse, they would have come up with a mitigation plan according to this proposal. That's all I'm saying. So in this case, I'm only speaking on the Lee schools that, that I'm talking on behalf. Thank you very much.
Mr. Carlos, we will now begin testimony. I see, let's say, Secretary Senator Amanda Shelton, you'll be followed by Senator Castro.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and I want to thank all of the stakeholders who are here today. Everyone from the PUC, from GPA, from our industry, renewable energy industry experts, as well as the Department of Education representative. Thank you very much, Superintendent Mr. Camacho, for being here today. I appreciate all the testimony and learning of the different possibilities that may come of this bill. And if Mr. Benevente and Mr. Horeki, I know that Mr. Camacho just mentioned, and Mr. Scott earlier in his testimony mentioned the study that you folks did a few years ago. If you can share with us some of the details of this study with regards to the authority and what we can learn from this data that we already have collected.
Yes, Senator, we'll go ahead and send you the study, which was about a year, about a year, year and a half ago. The way GPA invested quarter of a million dollars to analyze all the schools for energy efficient projects. And in fact, subsequent to that, we spent another two hundred fifty thousand, and we put in a pilot project at Carbon Leadership School. And that would give some results. You know, I'd like to also address, as mentioned by Carlos Camacho, and, and really, I could understand all the effort that has been put into that scenario. And he did mention it's been six to seven years, six to seven years or so before, when that resolution was passed. Net metering was probably only about five megawatts versus the twenty-six megawatt today. And so that's part of the difference, and that is, the difference today is that the PUC has said they will address, look at it in the twenty-six megawatts. So therefore, increasing net metering caps beyond what the PUC has said is really kind of interfering with the scenario. So, yes, if it was put in right away and not have all these issues about procurement and everything, GPA and the CCU did approve the, for the Lee schools to proceed, and that was approximately about five megawatts, if I remember correctly. And actually, that was five megawatts that didn't even require battery at the time. But because time has come all this way, the conditions of the systems or system is changed and different today. And it's something that we really should sit down and take a look at, based on what Mr. Camacho has mentioned today. So, you know, we don't, believe me, we support solar PV and all these systems. We just want to make sure it works well for everyone. That's our point.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Benevente, for that information. I look forward to receiving the data from you in the next couple of days, so that we can, you know, I'll take a look at that and see how it can help us move along with this legislation. Obviously, Mr. Chair, I'm, you know, very excited about this bill and the potential savings that it can bring to our institutions of learning, and also help us as we move forward with the mandate that we as a legislature pass for one hundred percent renewable energy for our island. And hearing from you folks, Mr. Vocolo, about, you know, the improvements in grid management and battery storage. You know, this, this makes us very hopeful that, that it will be possible and that we can, we can find a solution here, come to a consensus to make this happen. And I think what's different today about DOE and what's different about our institutions of higher learning in this whole situation is that we know that in this last budget cycle, that we saw significant cuts to DOE and to UOG and GCC, and they're experiencing dramatic shortfalls. And so I applaud the authors of the legislation for helping us to think innovatively to help the education system, as well as a long-term to preserve our environment in the best way that we can. And I will take into consideration all of the testimony that you gave here today about the different effects on our other ratepayers and how, how we can move forward together. So I appreciate the opportunity, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Shelton. Senator Castro, do you have anything you would like to mention or ask any questions, sir?
Just a short comment, Mr. Chairman. First of all, thank you to the panelists for providing your technical perspective. I think it's healthy to see a variety of perspectives that each of you have from a public policy perspective. Mr. Chairman, clearly, we have differences of opinion on energy conservation and overall cost reduction. And so this is, this is good fodder for a healthy debate. This is definitely not the last discussion I'm going to have with you, Mr. Chairman and subject matter experts. But I think it's a good broad stroke across the spectrum here to hear from our public sector representatives and from some folks from the industry here, many of you I respect. So nice to see you again, Mr. Fernandez. Thank you for coming. Mr. Scott, your input is always appreciated, and Carlos coming in from the development side of the House with deep knowledge on the federal side, appreciate that. So I can say good things about all of you, but I'd like to, Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'd like to have another opportunity after we digest all of the input to ask these technical questions. What you folks tend to see from time to time is we get into a debate on the floor. And usually, our debate is restricted to what's in front of us and what we've heard and what we've read. It isn't too often that we get to have a healthy debate on each of these finer points with people like you on a back and forth until after we've digested the material. This is, for me, Mr. Chairman, for giving is very technical. I stand with you on the measure, but I'm certainly open to amending it so that the people of Guam benefit ultimately in the best way possible. So if I could just respectfully request of you, Mr. Chairman and your able staff, one more time to come around and have a discussion where I can ask specific questions of the subject matter experts and these public policy officials here at the table. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the privilege to co-sponsor the measure with you, and I look forward to a follow-up discussion.
All right, thank you, Senator Wilt. Senator Tello, do you have any questions you want to pose to the folks that are here today?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, probably, well, I do have a question with regards to the one part in the bill that says that any individual who is going after the, I'm sorry, I'm trying, I'm learning to work everything online now, and that means bills, and I'm a hard copy kind of person, but trying very hard to, you know, save a tree. But there's a section in there that requires a five-year, okay, here it is, the last page, with a local track record of five years doing business as solar energy provider on Guam. Now, during the roundtable, it was mentioned that, I think it was you, Mr. Chair, where you would ask a question several times if there'd be, okay, so what if we just took out on Guam and just have that five-year experience? So I was hoping somebody would have touched on that, but they didn't, so I'm bringing it up. I think that it could be very unfair to just say on Guam. I think, you know, having someone with the experience of five years is good enough, especially if it won't cost as much. The, the concern on the issue with bond covenant is very serious. I know that, Carlos, you brought something up regarding that, and so it's a concern that I will be looking into. Other than that, Mr. Fernandez, my last question, have you had an opportunity to sit down with PUC Fred Horeki and discuss this bill? Oh, I can't hear you, sir. Okay.
No, we haven't. We haven't had a chance to discuss this bill in particular. This is actually the first time I've heard of the PUC's view of this proposal. I mean, it is different from our prior, from the prior bill that was in place. And as you recall, that bill allowed for GSA to procure, you know, a power, power, entered the power purchase agreements on our behalf, and then the Lee schools had their, you know, their process for doing that. So we never had the opportunity to move forward, and just this March, we were just, I think, we were given the authority to begin to move forward in that direction with PPAs, although the COVID nineteen pandemic has kind of taken over most of our bandwidth. So this bill, you know, does a couple of different things beyond that, which is, you know, with the expansion of the bill to other entities, the inclusion of the sale, leaseback, and the, the, the extension of the term. All of those compared to the prior bill would get, would provide more flexibility for GDOE to move forward and explore how it might take advantage of that authority. But, you know, again, that's, that's how we view the bill, as being more flex, more flexibility for, for us to be able to move forward. But, you know, this is the first we're hearing in terms of how that might impact, you know, the utility. So, you know, we're here listening as well.
Yes, the bond covenant. So I'm sure the two of you would probably discuss this further because, you know, I, I'm, you know, I'm sold on solar, but I'm also sold on it that it's going to actually provide us a great savings. And sometimes when people don't see the long run, you know, the longevity of it and how we can save money, it's hard to see that if you're not looking forward ahead. And I, I know that GCC and UOG, they've already been part of some kind of both installation of solar system. So I don't understand why they would be a part of this legislation because they're already given that authorization to do so. And they've been working with GPA on some incentives there for saving power and initiatives and lead equipment. But I, I did have a question. Because, you know, Mr. Fernandez, I remember talking to you about the possibility of owning this, the solar system, the panels itself, going through a grant opportunity, federal government, the Energy Office has these opportunities, and to do it in small phases. So we talked about that. So I'm hoping you remember that conversation. And I know that you're working closely with GPA as well as the other stakeholders. So I, I ask that you please keep that in mind, you know, that, you know, baby steps, especially in COVID, we're now learning how to coexist with COVID. And it, it may have to take baby steps at this point, but I do know that the cost savings would happen if we owned, out-owned the, the solar panels rather than doing through a PPA. It would be better off, government.
Well, I've heard that as well, especially in our last hearing on this bill. And I think that's probably the, the reason why the sale-leaseback provision was also considered, given the fact that we don't have the immediate resources to enter, to outright purchase the equipment. And I know you've said, "Look at, look at the possibility of grants." We did look at, you know, working with the US Department of Agriculture for financing assistance. So that's where that term, extension of the term to forty years would be beneficial. However, again, it just, I think for us, we just need clarity from the legislature with regard to the policy on what is allowed and what is not allowed, so we can move forward. Right now, we're authorized to explore PPAs as, as the primary option. And then if this bill passes, we would be given an opportunity to evaluate whether a sale-leaseback mechanism would be more beneficial financially and so forth. The advantage of a sale-leaseback at the very, you know, even, you know, give us an opportunity to finance the purchase, but also it would then establish a very definite cost per year that we would be able to plan around and be able to estimate savings, you know, in terms of our utility bills versus the power purchase agreement, which, you know, involved an escalator and involves some assumptions about the cost of, of, of energy, you know, going forward. So there are some advantages and disadvantages to the, but, you know, I think that this bill just expanded the toolbox for us. And so we're just kind of, I think for us, we just need to know whether we'll have that additional flexibility to be able to purchase, but with a lease-back, you know, mechanism.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fernandez, I appreciate your comments. And thank you, Mr. Chair, and everyone who's here today to testify, I appreciate it. Okay.
All right, thank you, thank you, Senator Tello. I'm going to wrap this up real quick. I'm just going to make a few statements. Number one, thank you, Mr. Scott, for what you brought up when you talked about lights, air conditioning and stuff like that. I took that when we met, I would say maybe eight or nine years ago, when you were up in Upper Tumon. I took that recommendation wholeheartedly. I went to Home Depot later, I bought all the LEDs, changed all my light system, reduced my power consumption, reduced my costs. On the solar part, I got involved in the solar, reduced my costs. So, you know, and Fred, thank you, Fred, you know, you're my lawyer. So I'm not, I, I take your, you know, your comments wholeheartedly. But it just bothers me just a little bit when we start talking about, "Well, we can't do the solar because GPA is going to lose money." And John Beneventi, I'm in support of GPA a hundred percent, but there's got to be a mechanism in place where everybody's got to get in the same, in the same sheet of music. Number one, as people move from solar or changing their light bulbs, changing their air conditioning, their consumptions go down, we can't be saying that if we do the solar, we do any energy, renewable energy, wait a minute, because the other people of Guam that are not renewable energy will have to pay more. No, I think GPA needs to adjust on how they produce power. And I can understand what, what needs to happen in reference to the bond market. And I think we'll work this out. I know that Senator Shelton texted me, "Did UOG and GC ask this?" I was pushing this since the last term with UOG and GC. That's why they're in the solar now, because they're trying to find a way, because we couldn't get this off the ground. And I know, John, you and I talked about, three years ago, you're supposed to present a program that was supposed to, so we can prepare DOE, UOG, and the whole of Guam, so we can start reducing government dependence on the people of Guam paying for the power when we can reduce it and start sharing it among the people of Guam, so that everybody on the island can get a lower rate somewhere, somehow. And I know that we're still looking at that. This is not just only for DOE, UOG, GC, GCC, but I heard a statement that, "How about the whole of Guam? Why not? Why don't we reduce what Guam is paying in power? Why don't we change all our lights? Why don't we change all our air conditioning? Why don't we just do what's right and let's get, get into saving renewable energy? And then we help GPA figure out a way." Because you remember, John, when, when you guys were going to build or buy the property over across the Mike's Mall, I said that if you can't, if you don't need to buy, put a power plant, put a solar farm. And, and you know, you, you can't forget that because we're on the open floor when I said that two years ago. And I'm only hoping that we find a way to save some costs throughout the island. Gov Guam, the people of Guam, let's go green, let's do what we need to do. And you know what, I'll continue to accept testimony, and I will be reaching out to everyone out here so we can get something, so we can get this bill. And we get this bill, so all of us are all on the same sheet of music. DOE needs the savings. I was on the Board of Education for six years, that's all we've been looking for. And remember, John, back then, we asked for a private-public partnership, trying to find a way to reduce costs at DOE. Do we still looking at that? They're trying to save money because they need to do capital improvement. But with that said, I'd like to thank all my colleagues for attending this afternoon's hearing and thank the panel, Mr. Scott, Mr. Vaccolo, Fred Horeki, John, and both, John Beneventi and John Fernandez, for attending, and I will continue to accept testimonies. And we will still be reaching out, Senator Castro made that very well known. And Senator Amanda, we're going to reach out to every one of you and see what we can do to adjust, make amendments on the bill so that everybody understands the focus is on fine-to-fine savings. That's the key. Renewable energy, savings, and we'll make it right. That's all I've been always after. It's not about the easy way, but the right way, and we'll just do it. And the committee will continue to receive testimony. And please submit your testimony through senatorjoessenovison@gmail.com. And in closing, again, I want to thank everyone for attending the virtual public hearing for Bill two one nine dash thirty-five COR and for providing feedback and suggestions. This virtual public hearing is now adjourned. The time now is four forty-eight. Please stay safe, wash your hands, wear a mask, practice social distancing and sit through a mask and hook up to the app, the COVID app. Thank you, folks, enjoy your weekend, be safe. Thank you, Senator.